Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our February 3 Denellenborough Council meeting. Our first order of business is a call to order and arise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Next up on the agenda is item number two, Sunshine Statement and Roll Call by our municipal clerk, Mrs. Lauren Stats.
This meeting of the Denellenborough Council is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of February 3, 2025 was included in a list of meetings that was advertised in The Courier on January 9, 2025, and as teleconference was noticed on the official Denellen website on January 31, 2025, and on the public bulletin board on North Avenue on January 3, 2025, and has remained continuously posted as the required notice. Mayor Salento?
Present.
Council President Sigmund?
Here.
Mrs. Albertson?
Here.
Mrs. Lance?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
And Mr. Vandermark?
Here.
Next up is item number three, Presentations. We have a presentation tonight by Dr. Listikin and his students for Synthesizing Historic Cultural Preservation and Economic Opportunity: Denellen Perspectives by Blaustein School of Public Planning and Public Policy. So, Dr. Listikin, a good friend of Denellen, welcome back.
For the opportunity. There should have been a student here, but they have a floor and a table.
Oh, boy.
It's just the one floor. If you're playing this time, what you're going to be doing would be not. So, I'd like to thank the man and council and municipal government in the public for allowing doctors to collaborate, work with the community on specific things, what's this video? It's real life, it doesn't always really just ivory tower, we leave some headline. We work with clients in this case, Denellen, on topics of mutual. And we've had the, the good fortune, it's now April, you know, it becomes studios on middle and Main Street. And students and people. And this is the topic. You can now look at the solid presentation, look at it as, as an engine that's actually supporting our development.
Everybody.
The topic is historic preservation, economic development, and how they can mutually support one another. And again, this is a studio, so this is a student work effort done by students in the Blaustein School, the Rutgers Blaustein School of Planning and Public Policy, where they do a studio. They work with a client on the topic. This past term, we only had a few students, but I told them, you're like the Marines. You know, the few of them proud, okay, but we will hopefully do the best we can. And I, they really, I'd like to share with you some of their work. Okay. What I'd like to do tonight is very briefly give you an executive summary, just let's face it, it's like, what? Let's jump into what is more important, and then I will cover some of these other subjects. Some interesting resources we found on the historic frame and the evolution of Denellen. How historic preservation can connect with, with economic development. Denellen is really almost unique in that there are a lot of surveys done of the community. I know really of very few other communities when there's a topic of interest that, that the community itself is surveyed. So, what was done here, and I'll report on the findings. What are some of the tools from historic preservation that could be used to encourage investment? Specifically, tax credits, okay? An interesting related topic, it's like, there are various ways to remember and preserve a community. And one way is by doing oral histories, and I'll share that with you. Executive summary, I'm not going to read because that's deadly, and I'm going to be covering this subject. There's a lot of, of history and fabric to, to preserve in, in Denellen. And, and you all realize that. Why do we do historic preservation? Well, you know, there are cultural, historic, aesthetic reasons, but sort of the theme of this studio is that it's, it's really connected to and can support economic development. There's two examples of that. The Main Street Program, which has a historic preservation theme. It's, it's been implemented nationally, and clearly they've done $100 billion worth of investment. And the federal historic tax credit has been applied to $200 billion of rehabilitation, and I'll go into that in some more detail shortly. We surveyed, again, thank you, Denellen, the residents, and historic preservation was supported. Why? Well, we want to preserve, tell our story, et cetera, et cetera. Also, many of the Denellen residents said, yeah, we might support a local historic commission. That's not the only way that, that, that you can do historic preservation, okay? Again, because of the theme of economic development and preservation, very key is a federal historic tax credit. So, that's a 20% credit if you rehabilitate an historic and identify historic property in, in the appropriate fashion. So, if you do $1 million worth of historic rehab, your taxes are reduced by, by $200,000. It's been used throughout New Jersey, roughly about 200 projects have used this federal historic tax credit. About $1.7 billion of investment there, and that gave their, their people involved with those projects $350 million of tax credit. So, that reduced the federal taxes. And it's been a long fight, but New Jersey has, two years ago, has added an additional state historic tax credit. So, that's piggybacked over and above the federal historic tax credit. I know the community has been interested in the Special Improvement District, and how can that connect with preservation? And using Main Street as an example, many of the Main Street programs in New Jersey also have a business, a Special Improvement District. You know, some further facets, including oral histories. I don't think that would be the first thing you would think about, about preservation, but it's really a nice opportunity for the community. This is more visual rather than professor talking too much. So, without too much effort, we were able to find some nice historic resources, fabric showing the community over time. And of course, you, you have people in town very interested in this, you know, going back to the, back from 1868. Of course, the evolution of the art colored printing factory. One town, Denellen, and a lot of New Jersey communities had, had trowels, well, this is a postcard done that. And again, they speak for themselves, you know, the market road, Denellen Avenue, how it looked way back when. Each way coming under solid postcard, the high school, it hasn't changed all that much. The train station, you see behind the trees, a area of view, and of course today, North Avenue, there and now. We also said, what would be a visual way to, to, to look at the evolution of a community? So, there's something called sandboard maps, what were they? These were maps and information put together by insurance companies, because they go insuring properties, okay? And they did this for many decades where they have, where they identified all the properties in a town over time. And different color coding is what types of properties, et cetera. They did that across the United States. So, I thought, well, wouldn't it be interesting, let's look at the sandboard maps for Denellen to see how the community looked way back when, and then side by side with the Google Earth, and that's basically what we did. Again, these are to the left, sandboard map as of 1919, and you know, you see how much more development we has, have today. Washington Park, again, not surprisingly, a bunch of development over time. Columbia Park, there wasn't that many buildings there. That's 1919, our figures today. So, I thought, you know that, and, and, and I'm really impressed with how much Denellen is doing to develop, redevelop, and there's appreciation of the community, so, as well as you have to pay the bills. So, so, you know, how does this all connect with, with economic development? Well, why do we do a star prison? What is a star preservation? And, you know, identifying, evaluating, and trying to get the historic and cultural fabric. Why are you doing it? For numerous reasons, you know, aesthetic reasons, cultural reasons, environmental reasons. You know, you're saving energy if you can reuse existing property. But given the theme of, of the studio, there were very significant economic benefits from, from preservation. Job, income creation, et cetera, on that, and it could be a part of her, right? So, there's a National Trust of Historic Preservation, and they have a Main Street program in, in thousands of communities nationally, and it's really economic development emphasizing the, the original character of the downtown, so it embodies preservation. These numbers speak for themselves, cumulatively since 1980, and in the, all these Main Street communities, you know, $102 billion worth of investment, and, you know, jobs, et cetera, just in 2022, over $6 billion, et cetera, on that. But I think it's one facet of preservation that's not fully appreciated. You know, it can foster and support economic development. The federal historic tax credit, well, it's been churning along since the late 1970s, and cumulatively, so again, that's the 20% credit. You do historic rehab, the $1 million, you get $200,000 for a few federal taxes. The cumulative rate's been almost $200 billion, and that has supported, you know, 3 million jobs and lots of income and GDP, et cetera. Just in 2022, there was $8 billion worth, worth of that investment on that. So, what does the community think about all this? Well, again, capitalizing on Denellen's willingness and ability to survey its residents on, on different topics. That's very unusual, they're working with the community. We developed a survey, actually, these questions, for the most part, parallel questions that the National Trust had surveyed. All right, so what, what, so how important is historic preservation to you? Well, you know, overwhelmingly, 95% of the respondents thought it's either very important, 60% or somewhat important, yeah, 34%. Which almost, almost in a mirror fashion reflects what the national survey was. So, the community is saying, you know what, this is important, and that. Why, why do we do this? So, these responses, by the way, are parallel to, to the National Trust survey. So, what were the top reasons why people would support historic preservation in, in Denellen, okay? Preserve neighborhood character, tell our story, history, to save the community's treasures, to preserve a sense of community, but as you can see, there were many reasons given by the respondents to the survey. We asked, what's your assessment of the following topics, you know, with, with one being not, not important and five being the most important? So, interesting, that being the town area was, was ranked as the purple, you know, most, as most important. Reliable train service, and after that, pretty much at the same level was historic preservation and, and affordable house. Okay. Now, there are many ways to go about historic preservation. One way is to establish a local commission, you don't have to do this. So, we asked, should a commission be established? Okay, and roughly two thirds said, said yes, okay. At the same time, okay, you can see about a quarter said no. So, so again, it isn't uniform support, but, but you can see some support for establishing a commission, and this is where you get that much more difference of a thing. All right, when you establish a commission, it, it could be just advisory, it could be more regulatory with oversight. So, it's like, well, what type of commission would you want to see? This, this was the question posed in the survey, okay, and it was, and it was mixed, so. You know, advisory was 38%, and others felt differently on that, so I'm really not, not surprised. And also, it's hard in a survey because there, there were a lot of nuances to this, but I think what we're saying is, you know, the feedback from, from the Denellen survey is preservation is important, you know, for some core reasons, et cetera. Kind of would be nice to have some entity, like maybe a commission to further this, and we're not exactly sure. You know, the curfew of that, you may, we also asked how important are oral histories? And as you can see, many thought it was, it was important on that. Okay. Since this topic is preservation and economic development and supporting it, let's look briefly at that, all right. So, there's a federal historic tax credit, that's the 20% credit, it's uncapped, a lot of credits are capped, this is totally uncapped. Two years ago, New Jersey added a state historic tax credit over and above the federal credit, and there were some other programs that are often not used in conjunction. You don't have to use it with the historic tax credit, but commonly, I use low income housing tax credit, Newmarket tax credit opportunities. So, I'll explain those in a moment. Now, most key is the federal historic tax credit, it's a 20% credit, it's uncapped. Again, so like, if you had a billion dollar project, you would get $200 million worth of reduction on your federal, on your federal taxes. You take that over five years, okay? The, the property has to be identified as a star, like for instance, on a national or state register. Not, they want to see a significant investment. They want to see that the rehabilitation is compatible with, with the historic fabric, and they're actually, you can layer other real estate benefits with this on that. Okay, but then, 20% credit speaks for itself, as far as it may be, but you know. You look at in, in, in New Jersey, we've been using the federal historic tax credit, about $1.7 billion of rehab has used this federal historic tax credit, giving the developers about $350 million of, of federal tax credits on it. So, it, it has, it has, it has been used, and it's been used significantly across the United States as well. Now, just to give you a flavor, this, this was, I just, this was the Hain Department Store in Newark. It was the department store where Newark was in its day, is the place where you went to shop, it closed, it was abandoned, and it was recently brought back, and they're just stunning, a stunning adapted reuse in the historic, in the historic preservation. So, they, they have the supermarket, they have offices, they have housing, et cetera, using, using many subsidies, including the federal historic tax credit. Now, the state historic tax credit, actually, New Jersey came late to this. Until two years ago, New Jersey didn't have this additional state historic tax credit, and with the pass, it can be quite a significant tax credit. The states in blue are the states that, that have state historic tax credit, which is over and above the federal historic tax credit. All right, so, I use, I'm, I'm, I'm using this as an example, because this could look like a property on the Main Street of, of Denellen. So, this was a, a drugstore that was rehabilitated, it used the federal historic tax credit, and this was in South Carolina on the state historic tax credit. So, the federal and state historic tax credit, this was a $3.8 million project. Totaled about $1.3 million, which was the size of the bank loan. So, so you see how significant that, that, the credit can be, okay? This is, this, the, but it always takes time to get the paperwork and to, and to have all, all the facets of a program. So, the state historic tax credit was just two years ago that was authorized. This is one of the first projects, so this was an office building in, in Atlantic City that used the state historic tax credit, I would assume used the federal historic tax credit as well. There, there are some other, again, this is not per se historic, low income housing tax credit is a, a 40 to 90% credit over 10 years to do affordable health. Newmarket tax credit is for economic development, it's a 39% credit over seven years, opportunity zones. Either defer, reduce, or eliminate capital gains if you invest in an opportunity zone on that. Okay. Now, so not surprisingly, you have across the, in New Jersey, across the United States, where they now layer besides the federal historic tax credit, and sometimes the state historic tax credit, but, but these other credits. So, this, this was a project in Louisiana, it was a massive reuse of the surplus school for housing, and it used the, the low income housing tax credit. Okay, there's a source called Policy Map, that's not always right, okay, but it spatially maps various types of data, including where have different programs been used and, and are, where's the eligibility for the show? Now, Denellen is not eligible for that Newmarket tax credits, you know, because that, that's slotted for communities more in economic distress. Similarly, not eligible for the opportunity zone. You can use the low income housing tax credit, yeah, that, that, that's not identified to an area. It's just that if you, you meet the criteria, one can get this 40 or 90% credit over 10 years, okay? As far as we can tell, the historic tax credit has, has not been used yet in Denellen. That could be wrong, because you know, this is a mapping thing, but clearly, it, it hasn't been much that the start activity. All right, so, how would you use the historic tax credit? Well, you have to identify a resource as historic, okay? The state has, this is a state historic preservation office, they now do things nicely with G I S, and they spatially map it, so they, they map where are the historic resources in New Jersey? Okay, this is in the source called Lucy, okay? And again, some of this can be sort of a little behind the times. When you look at, when you look at the Lucy data for Denellen, there is some historic identification, an eligible historic district, an eligible individual property, et cetera. But a lot more can be identified. And just to give you, again, it's not an A to D comparison, you see other communities have identified more, you know, in terms of districts and individual properties, which then allow you to use the federal historic tax credit and, and the state historic tax credit. Okay. Well, I'm talking about historic preservation, Denellen is, you've been thinking about a special improvement district, and the answer is the two connect and, and support one another, okay? They're looking at 25 Main Street programs, that's the historic preservation claim, program. 16 have a big and Sid, because they're mutually supportive. The bid and Sid raises some monies, which allow you to do some, you know, preservation in the downtown and improve the downtown and, and, and attract investment. Again, just touching as an example, some similarity clearly to Denellen, with, with, with the railroad, they adopted a, you know, a Sid, they have a Main Street program. The touching had a great American Main Street, well, you've been winning a lot of awards lately, you know, on smart growth and, and downtowns. Go, you, and in the touching, the, the combination, maybe, you know, preservation and Main Street and, and SIDS have had a material effect. So, if you look at, you know, property values over, over time, of course, there are many forces that, that have influence of property value. Okay. All right, so, what's another way to preserve? All right, and the thought here is, you know what? You may want to not consider what else, you know, commission, identifying properties, how the, the potential of the federal and state historic tax credit in the downtown and other areas of, of Denellen. But independent of that, oral history, what's an oral history? Basically, there are people interview other people, okay? They often, they interview long-term residents, seniors, et cetera. Who, who does the interviewing? Are entities trained in this? Actually, a, a nice way of doing it is to have the community do it, you know, have, have students do it, you know, make it part of, of a school project, you know. So, by Historic Corps, they've, they've been, they've been doing oral histories since the early 2000s. They've done almost 650,000 interviews, so, you know, if you want to say, how would I go about doing an oral history? Well, there's, this is one entity that, you know, can be contacted and collaborated with. Many communities in New Jersey have done oral histories, you know, on different facets of, of, of their histories. In New Brunswick, they're going to Story Corps, okay? And they did about 12 or 14 of these oral histories, it's now memorialized in the New Brunswick Library on that. And again, because, you know, older people are not always around, the memory of the community, the way it was, changes, et cetera. So, it's sort of nice to do this, et cetera. And I thought, in a helpful way, what's another way that Denellen may want to consider doing oral history as well? Rutgers has something called Rutgers Oral History Archive, and they've done like 1,300 oral histories, and it's all digitized, and you can, and you can put in a keyword, and it spits out, you know, 10, 20, 30 histories on that. So, I mentioned to them about our work in Denellen, and I said, is there any way you could help? And the answer is, they said, yes. You know, they said, you know, they could supervise it or conduct it. I think the nice thing would be, since they've done it, and they know what they're doing, this sort of say, all right, if you, if Denellen wanted to do oral histories, all right, show us a way and, and, and help launch it, et cetera. So, this could be a, a nice support. And it works both ways. You know, Rutgers wants, wants to show that it's connected to, to local communities in New Jersey. Okay. So, besides other aspects of preservation, you know, tax credits and what have you, I, I think oral histories is something to, 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 to consider. You know, maybe with the school district, maybe collaborating with Story Corps or Rutgers, et cetera. Okay, I'm just going to end with this. Some, one of the students here was a design concentration, so what do you think they focus on? Yes, okay. The short story is, I give the community credit, Denellen has been giving a lot of thought to enhance design. You know, here, this is where design is spoken about, and this is just a partial list in various, you know, in studies and documents. You get a visual preference survey, you know, that's like a go-to. And you ask people, well, what do you think of A versus B? And you've seen this before, so you, you really have the foundation to then go from this prior work and the visual preference survey to how to enhance a design, especially in the downtown, okay? And I'm not going to spend too much time here. We said, well, let's look at two areas in Denellen, let's look at currently, the, the student who's not here. They do their design idea, and you can see, yeah, kind of make it a little safer with more crosswalks, what have you, additional lighting, et cetera. Of course, your Main Street, you don't have full regulation on it, let's face it, okay? And again, some thoughts here. And the community, you, you've given this thought, you know, on how to enhance this. Um and and the community, you you've given this thought, you know, on how to enhance design. So this is um just some further thoughts from the student. Okay, sidewalks, we can always enhance, and you said that you control the sidewalks, uh et 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 cetera. Okay, so these these are some thought, alright, so but so bottom line, we appreciate the opportunity to have done this studio here, okay? Uh I'd like to think we have um introduced you to these two topics that really connect. You know, preservation and economic development, okay? In part, and and there have been savvy people investing in town, but there may be other opportunities. To use the historic tax credit, as an example. Maybe with a star attack credit, low command and tax credit, e- even though the, you know, they don't have to be linked, et cetera, et cetera. And especially with the new state historic tax credit, where people are trying to figure out exactly how it works. Uh it's a nice resource when many resources are are limited, okay? And also this oral history, you know, fine, you know, you have commission, you don't have the state historic tax credit, oral tax credit, yes, yes. And maybe that's, you know, a community or 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 a a school project on that. And uh maybe working with Storycorps, may maybe working with Rutgers, if Rutgers said they're willing to help, you know, I I would take advantage on of that. Okay, so thank you, I'm sure I've gone way over my uh my a lot of times, okay? That's professor stuff, okay, alright, so thank you, and I'm willing, any thoughts, questions, I'm I'm happy to to do.
I have a question.
Yes.
In light of the. Federal government spending detail.
Yes.
Uh the government is looking at, you know, cutting out certain.
Thank.
Threat.
Okay.
You throw that, that that likely in the back, like two.
Okay, so I, that's an astute observation, given what's going on. We don't know where we are with a lot of programs. I remember I was involved in twenty seventeen when they passed the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, where they wanted to get rid of the federal historic task. And I remember we went down to DC, we explained some of the benefits, et cetera, and actually, we we do an annual study for the park service. Who knows about the future, but there is a lot of support across the spectrum for being historic taxpayer. Who knows about the future, but there is a lot of support across the spectrum for being historic taxpayer. And it's it's been successfully used, you know, for many decades now, nearly from the late nineteen seventies. So you don't know about the future, but um I'd like to think of. And maybe, see, can you do it just with the state historic tax credit? It's harder, it's harder. But you you see, in in a time of, there were just limited resources. And and see what's what's different with with the with the historic tax credit. The the state historic tax credit is capped, by the way, the federal is totally uncapped, almost every other tax credit is capped, it's competitive. You just have so much low income housing tax credits, you have so much new market tax plates and you gotta compete. The the federal tax tax credit is uncapped, both on how much each year and on the size of the project. And it's been used a decade, so it's pretty clear, you know, how do you go about doing it so you get the benefit? That doesn't answer ma- major change in the future, yes, okay.
That's my brain.
Um I love the random, maybe, but many other studies are very.
Well, okay, I've been searching, I've been searching. More attention needs to be paid, you 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 see, when you, when you think about a landmark, oh my god, you know, it's Mount Vernon. It's not, it's really not that, it's a, it's a very broad spectrum of history, persons. Architecture, cultural achievement, uh et cetera, on that. And I have no doubt that Dan Allen, with along with other communities, it's been under identified. In terms of what might be eligible for the, uh let's start with the federal historic tax credit, which by the way, does not. Then regulate the private property rights of the. That's a misnomer, people think, oh, you're on the national, you're on the national register, we're gonna regulate you, no, that's just. If there's a federal undertaking that affects the property, you have to go through a new license, alright. Um. I I teach historic preservation, and I look at, you know, a lot of this application. I mean, I was walking downtown Dan Allen, it's nice, there are a lot of properties. Uh that that uh drugstore example that I showed you, I think it was South Carolina, that looks like a lot of your properties. On that, now it has to be, you have to have some, you have to have the fabric, it wasn't totally changed, et cetera. Uh there's usually an age cut off of fifty years, but lots of things at fifty years old, uh et 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 cetera. And now often what happens is, you know, developer wanting to use the historic tax credit, then. You know, brings in a preservation consultant who then, you know, does the paperwork, which then gets the property under register, which then. Uh then qualifies the property for 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 the tax pay. Um again, there's a lot of fabric in 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 Dan Allen that's intact and attractive. And again, it's not, it's not Washington select here, and it's not the the penultimate. Uh architectural achievement of Monticello with Jefferson, it's not that, it's not that. Your downtown is is in historic downtown.
Any other questions, Dr. Listickin? Without hearing any, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When when a, well, we might a lot of time.
It's all good, we're always happy to hear from you, Dr. Listickin.
Thank you. When you're appreciating opportunity, I mean, I I told the students, this is really disappointing, you should.
Understood, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you to Rutgers University, Edwards Blaustein School of Planning and Public Policy, Dr. David Listickin and his students. For this presentation tonight, um we've worked with the Blaustein School over the years for many different surveys and studies. And I'm grateful for our ongoing collaboration, and uh it will continue, my friend, correct? Hopefully, right? Good, thank you. Okay. Item number four on the uh agenda is uh mayor's appointments to board committees and commissions. Tonight, we have one appointment of Tara Duggan uh to the mayor's cannabis task force and to the Dan Allen Downtown Management Organization. So thank you to Tara for stepping up to the plate, uh she is not here this evening, and uh thank you again. Uh David, thank you again, get home safe, we'll talk soon enough. Item number five on the agenda is proclamations, uh this evening. We uh have a proclamation recognizing February as Black History Month. And tonight, we are going to invite up Tom Murray, uh he is a Dan Allen business owner and resident. Uh we want to thank him for joining us this evening to read the official proclamation recognizing February as Black History Month in the borough of Dan Allen. Tom is the owner of Smack and Rolls Food Truck, which is frequently spotted at Dan Allen Borough events. And makes a variety of unique and delicious egg rolls from scratch. And uh so welcome, Tom, and at this time, uh we ask that you join us and to read the proclamation.
See if those bodies, thank you. Because I forgot my glasses. These are not mine. I will now read proclamation recognizing Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by African Americans. And a time for recognizing their central role in US history. And whereas Black History Month was preceded by the establishment of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson. And the Association for the Study of African American Life and History in nineteen twenty six. Whereas the two thousand twenty five theme for Black History Month focuses on the various and profound ways. That work and working of all kinds, free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary. Intersect with the collective experiences of black people. And whereas the Borough of Dan Allen recognizes the contributions of African Americans to our borough. County, state, and country, and reinforces our commitment to be a community of opportunity and hope for every citizen. And whereas the Borough of Dan Allen separates its rich cultural and ethnic diversity. Respecting each of our neighbor neighbors, friends, family, members, and business owners. Based on content of their character. And whereas our community is better because of the diversity of our population. Now therefore, be it resolved. That you.
And I, Mayor Jason F. Solento, Dan Allen Borough Council.
Okay. Recognize February as Black History Month in the Borough of Dan Allen. And encourage residents to join us in celebrating and honoring the history and culture of the African American community. Throughout this month, signed on the third day of February two thousand twenty five, Mayor Jason F. Solento.
Thank you again to Mr. Murray, a longtime resident business owner, and if uh you haven't tried his smack and rolls. Certainly give them a shot, they're very, very good, so. And congratulations on the business and the growth that it's seen over the past several, well, the past couple of years, right? Not even, okay, so within a year, so God bless you and continue, a good work, my friend. Okay, uh next up is item number six on the agenda. The approval of our meeting minutes from the January twenty first council meeting, can I have a motion a second, please?
Move it, Sigma.
Second, Albertson.
Uh any comments or additions or uh edits to the meeting minutes as they currently stand? Without it, hearing any, can we take a roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Item number two on the agenda is the introduction of ordinances, we have two this evening, twenty twenty five dash zero four and twenty twenty five dash zero five. Um for those in the audience who uh might not be aware of how the process works on ordinances. Uh mayor council introduce an ordinance or ordinances, um they are uh basically introduced to the public. And uh they're not really just uh debated on just yet, um but if they're approved and move forward. At the next council meeting, they would be publicly heard and possibly adopted after uh the public has an opportunity to have a say on them. And mayor and council have an opportunity to debate on them, should we want to make further amendments or changes. After tonight's meeting, you can then pick up the ordinances for your reading uh at the municipal clerk's office. If you want a hard copy, or you can find them online, so. First up, can I have a motion and second on twenty twenty five dash zero four? An ordinance to amend the general legislation of the Borough of Dan Allen Municipal Code, Chapter two thirty three. Sewer use, Article One, General Regulations, Section thirty seven sewer rates.
Move it, Sigma.
Second, Lance.
Uh just to summarize this really quick, um every year we have to do this statutorily, so the tax collector can issue the sewer utility bills. Um but in recent years, the Borough of Dan Allen has completed several necessary sewer main upgrades. As part of our commitment to maintaining and improving the infrastructure of our community. And to ensure reliable wastewater service for our residents and businesses. And to, and to ensure, as I stated, this work has covered approximately thirteen hundred feet of sewer mains. Throughout the borough, including the repair of bypass line on Grove Street to South Madison Avenue. Uh Redwood Avenue, Pulaski Street, Grove Street, Jackson Avenue, and Klein Place. Since two thousand twenty, the borough has taken a very proactive approach to maintaining our aging sewer infrastructure. Uh utilizing camera and video inspections to monitor the conditions of the systems. Allowing us to better plan for replacement and lining rather than more costly repairs in the event, in the event of a sewer break. Uh as a direct result of these efforts, we were able to line one thousand one hundred and eighty feet. Of the thirty one hundred feet of sewer main underneath Second Street. A process that extends the longevity of sewer mains by thirty to forty years, um and add a fraction of the cost of emergency repairs. Um so most importantly, to take note from this this summary is to to help cover the cost of these critical improvements. The borough will be implementing a slight sewer tax rate adjustment with an increase of fifteen dollars in two thousand twenty five. So that brings it from three fifty to three sixty five, should mayor and council move this forward. Um this will help offset the cost of these improvements while easing the financial impact on the tax rate payers. Um it is important to note that the Borough of Dan Allen has not seen a sewer tax increase since two thousand seventeen. Despite the rising costs in infrastructure maintenance, being passed on to the borough by the Plainfield Area Regional Sewer Authority. Commonly known as Parsa, and of course, general inflation. Um so in nearly a decade, we've not seen an increase, and so we're gonna possibly see a fifteen dollar increase. So from three fifty to three sixty five, should that be the decision of the council? Um but costs are rising, we have to cover them, okay? So with that, take a roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Can I have a motion and second on twenty twenty five dash zero five? Bond ordinance providing for municipal facilities capital needs assessment in and by the Borough of Dan Allen appropriating eighty thousand. Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of seventy six thousand bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost.
Move it, Sigma.
Second, Lance.
To summarize, this is a facility assessment for um our building we're currently in, uh as well as uh other buildings. Um one being a part of a conditional redevelopment agreement that we entered into. Um to basically assess what improvements need to be done, so we can actually function at the twenty first century level. And providing quality municipal services, as well as ensuring that we are able to provide public safety the way it should be able to be provided. In facilities, so um this is uh, that's what that is, is we're funding the feasibility studies.
Okay, we'll take a roll call. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Item number eight, item number eight on the agenda is the adoption of ordinances, we have three this evening, twenty twenty five dash zero one. Kind of a motion and second on that, it's an ordinance to amend ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty two, repealing and replacing chapter two. Two hundred and two parking meters of the Borough Code in its entirety.
Second, Albertson.
Right, thank you. At this moment in time, we'll open the floor to the public solely on twenty twenty five dash zero one. We ask that you please state your name and address and discuss solely this item. Without hearing any comment from the public, we'll open the floor to mayor and council on twenty twenty five dash zero one for discussion. Without hearing any discussion, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Can I have a motion and second on twenty twenty five dash zero two? An ordinance to amend and supplement the general legislation of the Borough of Dan Allen, Chapter two zero two.
Move it, Sigma.
Second, Albertson.
Um Mrs. Stats, just for clarification, before we open up to the public, this was a clerical error. Correct, that we had to correct?
Correct, also fixing twenty twenty five dash O one with the chapter and number.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We'll open the floor to the public solely on twenty twenty five dash zero two. We ask that you please state your name and address and discuss solely this or this item. Without hearing any, we'll close that, opening the floor to mayor and council on twenty twenty five dash zero two. Without hearing any, we'll close that. Opening the floor to mayor and council on two thousand twenty-five dash zero two. Without hearing any, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Can I have a motion in second on two thousand twenty-five dash zero three, bond ordinance amending Section three G, oh, right, G, G description of the project and the bond ordinance of two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-one. I might need new contacts.
Move it, Sigma.
Second, Albertson.
Okay, just so the public is aware, this is the uh amending of the description of the project. Uh, um, to read as follows, installation of flashing beacon signs at various locations, including but not limited to Madison Avenue and Washington Avenue intersections with First Street and Dunellen Avenue, South Washington Avenue and Orange Street intersections, and New Market Road and Grove Street intersections, and further including all working materials necessary there. Therefore, an incidental uh there too. So mainly those rapid beacon lights you see on Lincoln Avenue on other locations that are heavy trafficked. Um, uh, so open the floor to the public on two thousand twenty-five dash zero three. We ask that you please state your name and address and discuss solely this item. Without hearing any, we'll close that portion and we'll open the floor to mayor and council on two thousand twenty-five dash zero three. Okay, without further discussion, we'll take a roll call, please.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Item number nine on the agenda is our resolutions. We have resolutions eighty-two through eighty-nine. Uh, Mrs. Stats, if you can read them out and just give mayor and council an opportunity to discuss them if we so choose.
Resolution number eighty-two is to pay the bills.
Move it, Sigma.
Second, Lance.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number eighty-three is authorizing DMR architects to prepare the redevelopment plan for block eighty-five, lot three.
Move it, Sigma.
Second, Albertson.
As council may remember, this is the properties behind the uh Kay Havanian project. Um, well, famously known as Dunellen Station Project, they're currently warehouses. Uh, last, was it last year, we did an area needed redevelopment study. It was deemed appropriate for development. So the developer being Kay Havanian again is coming to the table to present um townhouses, for sale townhouses. Um, the initial project um was discussed as apartments, and we did push back on that for the area. And so um, that is what they're gonna be proposing at the given time. But in order to get there, we have to have DMR present a redevelopment plan for that area.
We'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark. Resolution number eighty-four is authorizing the filing and settlement of tax appeals.
Move it, Albertson.
Second, Sigma.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number eighty-five is to hire summer art camp teachers for the Dunellen Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission Summer Art Camp.
Move it, Albertson.
Second, Sigma.
Sure.
Just want to clarify that to, you know, the people know that the people that are hiring British are being paid from the recreation. From the recreation department, right, through the money that's raised.
There's a separate trust account for the Dunellen Arts Inclusion.
Correct, yeah.
Sort of make sure that you handle that way, it's not an official charge.
No.
Yeah, we get grants from Middlesex County.
Yep, they're paid per hour in the position of ZAP benefits, and they'll be paid through purchase order.
And most, most programs, actually all programs that we do through recreation and the Arts Commission is self-sustaining.
Just what I'm gonna ask.
Okay, hope we give them some reassurances, council. Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Okay. Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number eighty-six is to award a contract to Wells Fargo for the clerk's office and police department copy machines.
Move it, Sigma.
Second, Lance.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number eighty-seven is to authorize professional services for general engineering to CME associates for the preparation of a Sage Grant application.
Move it, Sigma.
Second, Albertson.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number eighty-eight is to transfer appropriation reserves for the two thousand twenty-four operating accounts.
Move it, Sigma.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Resolution number eighty-nine is to adopt the two thousand twenty-five temporary capital budget. Move it, Rios.
Second, Sigma.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Uh, item number ten on the, on the agenda is the consent concerning, and I have a motion in second on ninety through ninety-three. Unless there's a specific resolution council members would like to pull out, we just ask each state.
Second, Rios.
Mrs. Albertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Mr. Vandermark.
Yes.
Next up is item number eleven on the agenda, uh, council reports. Uh, council member Albertson, anything to report this evening?
Not this evening, thank you.
Council member Rios, anything to report?
Yes.
I just said wow, she has a very polite.
Thanks.
Sorry, council.
Uh, Board of Education, parent engagement sessions. The school district is hosting a series of parent engagement sessions. The first session took place tonight at six thirty P M, focusing on social media safety, understanding harassment, and intimidation and bullying, H I B. The next session is scheduled for Tuesday, February eighteenth at six thirty P M, and the topic, how to be a trusted adult. ESL parent classes, Board of Ed is now in the second year of their ESL classes. The winter session is being taught by Dunellen High School teacher Mario Amana Vargas, and has been, has seen a strong attendance. And for more information about these classes, please contact Pablo Ortiz. Uh, employment opportunities for the Board of Ed. Uh, they are looking for substitute nurses, substitute teachers, and custodians. If interested, please reach out to Ms. Lebliner for more information. Uh, next Board of Ed meeting will be on February twenty-fifth at seven P M. Buildings and ground, I T update at Borough Hall and Police Department. Over the past few, vast, past few months, several I T processes have been updated to enhance efficiency, security at both Borough Hall and Police Department. Borough Hall set up new laptop PC and the tax assessors and court and the firehouse. Uh, supported the installation of a new phone system at Borough Hall Police Department and D P W, provided monthly monitoring, maintenance of servers and PCs, troubleshooted and resolved day-to-day technical issues. Police Department collaborated with vendors to install the new front door cameras, door access, access system, set up and installed multiple mobile computers in uh police vehicles, diagnosed and resolved communi- communication issues in car five oh two, created new officer accounts, migrated data, uh, services, retired an old P D server left by a previous I T provider. These updates, these updates support and continued reliability and security in our I T infrastructure across departments. Dunellen Public Library. Stay up to date with our latest events by visiting our Facebook page and website. We're excited to introduce our new museum. Well, they're not new, but they, we've been, we've gotten more. So our museum pass program sponsored by the Friends of the Library. To check out and use the museum passes, you must have a valid Dunellen Public Library card. Um, our available pass, museum passes include the Museum of Met of the Newark Museum of Art, American Museum of Natural History, Guggenheim Museum, Turtleback Zoo, Intrepid Sea, Air and Space Museum, Storm King Art Center, Montclair Art Museum. Be sure to contact us or visit the library to check pa- to check pass availability before planning your visit. And Greenbrook Flood Commission. The upcoming, uh, upcoming meeting will be held via Zoom on Wednesday at uh February fifth. That's all.
Yes, so from the Dunellen Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission, um, recently was discussed over the month of January about um putting together some kind of art show, something that would um feature um and exemplify Black History Month. And so last month, the commission sponsored a Black History Art Show contest in partnership with Dunellen High School's art program led by Mr. Larry Boyd Ball. Um, Dunellen High School along with the Dunellen Arts and Inclusion Culture Commission has announced the winners of the Black History Month Art Contest. Janine Adrian won first place for her painting of artist Jean Michel Batiat. Um, Hunter Mulligan took second place with a painting depicting civil rights leader Martin Luther King Junior, embracing modern recording artist Kendrick Lamar. The mayor and council look forward to acknowledging Black History Month with a recognition event for the contest winners, which will take place on February eighteenth. The artwork will be displayed at the high school from February first to February eighteenth, after which it will move to the Dunellen Library. An exhibition of all submitted acrylic paintings can be found at um a length that maybe we can share through the Dunellen Arts Inclusion and Culture Commission. Um, and we want to thank everyone for their participation. You should really check it out. The work is beautiful, absolutely beautiful. Um, and so I'm sorry, the commission has also been in preparation for Spring into Wellness, which is set for May fourth, coinciding with the open air market and featuring health-focused performances. Um, we have, they have a Unity Day scheduled. And um, they're already planning for the warmer weather with um the summer art program and music and plays in the park. So there's more information to come. I also have a report from Recreation Department. Um, Dunellen Recreation was pleased to host its annual senior citizen holiday luncheon on Saturday, January twenty-fifth at the newly restored firehouse. It was a wonderful turnout of fifty seniors who enjoyed a delicious dinner and games along with musical entertainment and sing-alongs led by Carl Geiger on the piano. The Recreation Department is very grateful for the support from Mayor Solento and all the council members. We are especially thankful to the Dunellen Fire Department for the use of the hall along with all those who helped serve the seniors throughout the event, including Recreation Commission members Jim Brennan and Kathy Wilson, Mayor Solento, Solento, sorry. Uh, council members, um, Prisalidis Lance, Trina Rios, and Hal Vandermark. We're also thankful for volunteers Kate Ruskuski, Tyler Mayer, and Saliman Khan for their assistance in making this an enjoyable event. Registration is now open for spring programs such as baseball, softball, and tennis. Baseball is offered to children ages four through eight. Softball is offered to children grades one, first through eighth, and tennis is available for children ages six through seventeen. The registration deadline for baseball and softball is March tenth, and the registration deadline for tennis is April first. So to avoid late fees, don't wait to register. Dunellen Recreation is also pleased to offer spring open soccer, a pre-program for Dunellen residents. In order to make this program available, they need support from volunteer coaches. Depending on how many volunteer coaches they have, that will determine how many children they can admit into the program. So if your child is interested and you're available, we encourage you to step off the sidelines and into the field. This program is low commitment and runs strictly by volunteers. So if you're interested in being a volunteer coach, please contact Rec Program Coordinator Kelly Cedar at casecedar@dunellenborough.com. And although it's still winter, it's never too early to start prepping for the summer. Dunellen's Rec Summer Camp is available for children ages five through twelve and begins on Monday, June sixteenth. It's a nine-week program that lasts from eight A M through three P M daily with a late pickup option until five P M. Children will be engaged throughout the program with fun activities, including different sports, outdoor recreation, crafts, field trips, scavenger hunts, walking trips, and more. Register by Friday, February fourteenth, and receive the Early Bird special discount. Space is limited, limited, so register early, and that is all.
Okay, thank you. That was a great senior holiday party, and uh Homer was in the audience giving you two thumbs up, so um, Homer was happy with it, too. Councilmember Sigmund?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, so I had the pleasure of joining the Shade Tree Commission's first meeting of the year where officers were elected. And I believe Ken Boden Distel, who is the chair, has over twenty rings um of service. And uh, thank you to all of the volunteers for dedicating their time and effort to our town. I'm looking forward to a booming or blooming season uh and the release of our tree inventory. Um, I also want to uh give a special thanks to Enrique, one of the members, for helping me identify the trees in front of my house and giving me tips to have better apples from my trees. Uh, so thank you Enrique and the Shade Tree Commission.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, councilman. Councilmember Scott?
I can't top that report. So for D P W, they continue to routinely clean the downtown, the parks and properties. Uh, they finished picking up the Christmas trees around the borough, removed dead trees, one on Prospect, one on Walnut Street, trimmed multiple trees on Dunellen Ave, updated the various bilingual signs in the D P W yard, and they began the yearly process of inspecting and cleaning each of the catch basins in the borough. This process will continue over the next few months, and I believe there's over seven hundred catch basins. It's a long process. Mechanic Division. They service the police fleet as they're due for maintenance or as breakdowns arise. Service the D P W equipment and fleet vehicles for maintenance as, for maintenance and breakdowns as they arise. And they repaired the plows and the stove equipment after the last storm. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you.
Not as interesting.
Well, they did a great job after the last snowstorm, curb to curb, always going to do a good job. Um, so uh, in terms of D P W and the signs for downtown, when will the no parking overnight be placed, if it's not been placed already? Okay, see the fifteen-minute parking in certain locations. Okay, so are we looking towards the end of the month or? Okay, thank you. Um, so my report this evening, um, actually fairly quick. Uh, just reporting out from the engineer CME Associates, uh, the Washington Avenue Street Lighting uh project. The projects have been awarded, and CME is coordinating with the approval of the award with the New Uh, the Washington Avenue Street Lighting, uh, project, the project's been awarded and CME is coordinating with the approval of the award with the New Jersey Department of Transportation Local Aid and the required construction contracts. So more to report over time. Second Street Phase One, the project's been awarded and CME is coordinating the approvals with the NJ DOT Local Aid. And again, the required construction contracts that go along with it. Um, the Railroad Ave Culvert Project, uh, CME and the Borough Administrator met with representatives from the Army Corps and D E P to discuss the status of their improvements and whether or not they have, uh, improved tailwater conditions in the Bonniget Brook. Uh, CME shared their analysis with them and they agreed to review them and get back to us later. So more to report, uh, hopefully in the coming weeks. Uh, Strip Joint, or known as six thirty-five Bound Brook Road, uh, demolition and remediation bid documents have been prepared and are under final review. CME anticipates transmitting them to the borough next week. Uh, CME has discussed the street lighting, lighting conversion, costs with Mike Coyle of P C and G as directed by Frank Lucchese. Uh, Mr. Coyle, uh, contacted Bob Hughes of P C and G regarding the borough's concern. Um, and P C and G maintains that costs are going to be required. We're trying to push back on them that, uh, it's, it's not just the implementation cost, beyond the implementation cost, they've increased the amount in which we'd be paying monthly. And, uh, we're pushing back, uh, cause, uh, they're LEDs, so they should not be more expensive over month over month than what they currently are underneath their current, uh, status. Uh, the Mar House, uh, a walk-through of the building was conducted and the assessment is underway. Uh, CME will continue to monitor the work being performed by Comcast. Um, and CME is reviewing the grant requirements for five hundred Mountview Bike Pass and preparing budget figures for the borough's use. So a lot going on. Um, and, uh, yeah, so that's that from me. Uh, item number eleven is council discussion. I just, there's nothing on that this part of the meeting this evening. Item number thirteen is department head reports. Okay. I'm gonna ask Legal to report back on a question that was presented at last council meeting. So if you wouldn't mind discussing.
Uh, yes, Mayor, at the last meeting, there's a question raised by Councilman Vandermark with regard to the licensing, uh, specifically, it was a beauty parlor license. The question was about limiting the, a number of those type of establishments, uh, with the idea of encouraging other types of retail in the downtown district. Uh, my opinion at that time, uh, was confirmed, I did look into the issue. Uh, my concern about that issue was that it would violate equal protection, uh, uh, restrictions and rights. And, uh, there were a number of cases that I found, uh, that would indicate unless there's a rational basis for that type of classification, uh, that, that type of ordinance would be barred by, uh, equal protection, uh, rights. Uh, there, there are a number, a handful of, uh, situations, uh, historically, gas stations have had some kind of uh, distance regulations, but e- even those now are being called into question. Uh, so based upon the research I did, uh, my, my conclusion was that that type of ordinance would not be sustained unless it was some very, uh, compelling, uh, rational basis for the classification.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on the legal?
Uh, no, no other. Thank you.
Okay. So the legal opinion is consistent with what we've been told from regu- uh, municipal council in the past, as well as from our redevelopment council. So, um, now it's again duly noted on the regulations. Thank you. Uh, municipal clerk?
It's a little early, but just a reminder that the primary election has been changed from Tuesday, June third to Tuesday, June tenth.
Yes. And just so we note it on record here, um, last year, based upon the request from the school district, um, it was the last year's, we'll be doing elections in the school. So we are assessing other locations, um, through the county's boards of elections on, uh, whether they'll be good to go. You've discussed with the department heads on those. Okay, so, um, the county board of elections is going to assess the library, uh, as well as the firehouse. And of course, uh, we'll hope to maintain the senior center. So we're looking at keeping two or three voting polling stations. So. Okay. Okay. Administration. I T?
No.
Okay. O E M? Yeah, something's going on. Do I have to go out and play the lottery? Between the two of you, no report? We're joking. We appreciate everything you do, Homer. Uh, police department? Nothing. How's parking authority back there?
We're working.
You're working, enforcing? Rescue squad?
So if any people want to volunteer, uh, go to the website, www.charity.org, uh, and thank you. We are creating a lot of, uh, of, uh, of.
Okay, thank you. Okie dokie. Uh, next on the agenda is item number fourteen, public comments. Uh, we're gonna open the floor to those in chambers first, then we'll go to online and then we'll do a general blanket. We ask for those in chambers, please state your name and address, and the microphone is right up front.
Uh, good evening, council. Um, I'm Angelo Fasipanti Manila, uh, address two?
Yes.
Six, three, four, Down Brook Road. Um, so this is perhaps tangentially related to the ordinance on pedestrian lights on Lincoln Avenue. Uh, I want to raise concern over the emergency light overlooking North Avenue and Lincoln Avenue. Um, I think it poses a concern to all pedestrians, but especially students walking to and from school. Um, since, uh, from my observation, uh, drivers seem to mistake it for a green, a normal intersection with the green light. Um, uh, which gives them the impression that they have the right of way, and I've seen many pedestrian incidents of drivers going through an intersection with students currently in it, um, or other close calls like that. So I would personally like to see it turned off or even better have, uh, some pedestrian crossing lights on either side, just like up the road.
Okay. Well, thank you for that concern. I'll address both. Um, being that the rescue squad is no longer there, it was there to let people know that you can drive past the rescue squad and it would turn red when the rescue squad had to come out.
Right.
Um, can we check on the status of turning it off, well, the removal, but if not the removal, at least turning it off for now? Okay, thank you. Speaking of the rapid beacon lights that you're speaking of, um, aside from Madison Avenue on, uh, First and Denellin and Washington Avenue, Denellin and First, um, as well as South Washington Avenue and Orange going into Columbia Street and New Market and Grove. Um, those are one project. Um, the one at Grove and New Market and Washington and Orange are actually being funded by a grant we got. The other two we are funding by capital. Now getting to the downtown, there's going to be those rapid beacon lights at key intersection, Bound Brook Road and Sanford, Lincoln Avenue and, uh, North Avenue, Prospect Ave and North Ave and Jackson Ave and North Ave. And so that's going to be, we got the funding for those through redevelopment agreements where we negotiated community benefits from the developers. Um, so there is good things get from developers. Um, so they're funding a lot of pedestrian safety measures in the downtown. Um, we were able to convince the D O T they're coming through. They've been saying since two thousand twenty, when I first became mayor, they were going to improve all the ADA compliant ramps. And then it got postponed and postponed and postponed. But you'll probably see they're starting to get the areas prepped at the, at the crosswalks. So we were able to convince them to coordinate the installation of them alongside of when those crosswalks were getting, uh, implemented. So they were actually supposed to be implemented earlier, the crosswalks, but there was a delay because we, we pushed to get the, the beacon lights as part of the project. So you'll see the crosswalks go in and then hopefully by the end of this year, you'll see the beacon lights.
Okay.
So your mind's in the right place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? We ask that you please state your name and address.
Hello, David Atkinson, two forty-seven Penfield, uh, president's now in rescue squad. Uh, with the comment prior with the emergency lights, uh, on, uh, Route twenty-eight, I know there was a lot, um, of time that took to get those lights there. Uh, it's a good idea to move them and in the process of moving them, we already know our new location. So maybe instead of just, uh, removing them and putting them away, we can have them, you know, two things at once, get them into the new location properly.
It'll all depend upon what the current M U T C D standards are. So if they're, has everything else, they update everything and so.
I figured it out.
It'd be great to put them over there, but in the meantime, we'll, we'll try to get us, Alex will talk to the D O T about if we can do that. There might be up, updates that we have to do to code or whatever the state statute is. Um, and then if not, we're gonna at least look to address the concern of how do we at least turn them off for the time being.
Sure.
Because that's a good point. Okay, thank you, David. Any other members of the public? Please state your name and address that are in chambers. Not will move to online. How's the, uh, the rehab of Bubbs Boba? Getting there slowly but surely. Oh, great. Oh, sooner. I was hearing like April, but I'm happy to hear it's closer. So, great, great. How's business over at East Coast Iron? Good. Okay, we'll open the floor to members of the public who are joining us virtually. Please state your name and address. Without hearing any of from public virtually, we'll open the floor generally, just so we cover our bases. Please state your name and address. All members of the public, both in person and virtual. Okay, without hearing any, we'll close that portion of the meeting. We have no executive, uh, meeting this evening. So the next up is item number fifteen. Adjournment. Uh, before we do that, I will say the next mayor and council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, clearly, at seven P M. in these chambers. You can join in person or virtually. So without further ado, can I have a motion second on item number ninety-four, adjournment?
Move it, Sigmund.
Second, Scott.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?